Good evening, I'm calling this meeting to order. Today we have two items on the agenda and we will begin with our 2021 legislative priorities. We have with us our Regional, State and Federal Affairs Consultant Doug Levy. Welcome Doug.
Thank you, Madam President and Councilmembers. I've got a screen to share here, so bear with me.
And good evening, Council President Perez, Councilmembers, Preeti Shwedar. I would like to kick this off to state that we have with us Doug Levy, who's been with us for a long time. And as we shared today, the legislative priorities for the city, as well as our regional and federal agenda. Just to put it in context, it's been, in every way, a very interesting year, to say the least. A very uncertain year. And to top it all, we're just, you know, coming out of an election that has certainly some changes that's going to impact the nation, that's going to impact our state and regional affairs, and that's going to have some, you know, immediate changes to our own legislators and potentially some changes that might happen in terms of a domino effect based on, you know, maybe even the governor's mansion and therefore, you know, ripple effects that would make changes in 2021 and going forward. Thank you all for your support because we did, as we were developing and evolving our priorities for the city, in terms of our legislative priorities, work very closely with all the departments and looking to work with, you know, each of the areas and, you know, seeking input from our community and with you. And Doug will work through these with you. The process this year, and Doug will again talk to you, is going to be very different. It's been a Zoom world for all of us. And certainly in terms of how Olympia is going to function, is going to be different. We already know that the priorities in Olympia are going to be different. But having said that, I think we as a city are well positioned. We've always maintained very good relationships with our legislators. We're continuing to do that. But I'm particularly confident that in the areas that they are embracing as their priorities, Renton has always been at the forefront. We know that equity and inclusion is something that they are taking very seriously and to heart. And, you know, we have very much embraced and kind of been, you know, examples for the region in a lot of the work we've done. So I think that's going to be to a great advantage for us. And so also in terms of the relationships we've built, not only with the legislators who, you know, represent our area, but on a broader scale and with the community in a, you know, in a broader regional area. So with that, I'll turn it over to Doug to go through the specifics of both our state agenda and priorities, as well as some of our other areas. And, you know, we welcome your questions and discussions on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Preeti. That was an excellent introduction. So I will go through these and as Preeti said, we welcome any questions you may have along the way or at the end of this. As Preeti said, 2021 is all about uncertainty and unprecedented. And I've started calling it the, you know, the virtually all virtual session. First of all, we don't have certainty at a federal level. We're pretty sure we have a new president. We don't have clarity as to who's going to control the US Senate. We don't know what's going to happen and when with a COVID relief package that could be really critical to both state and local governments. At the legislature, I'm used to talking to you all about what's going on in Olympia. There's really not going to be much of an in Olympia in 2021, unless you're a legislator or an authorized employee. The Capitol Building and the Capitol campuses are off limits to you. So no guests, no lobbyists, and, you know, we'll talk about in Olympia again for 2022, we hope. Within the region, we've sort of gotten used to this alphabet soup of Zoom and Skype and WebEx and go-to-meetings. And so I think Renton's been a real leader in making sure we can still get some of these things done via online platforms and online work. At the state legislature, I need to correct this first item, but with last week's revenue forecast, the state is in a little better or less worse place, I should say, with their operating budget. It's now about a $3.5 billion four-year operating deficit, something on the order of a billion-dollar shortfall in their transportation budget. They've seen with the prevalence of online schooling that there are holes in the broadband system. We know the economy is really battered across particular key sectors. We've had the whole outcry for racial justice and equity as we've seen what's happened across the country. And we know that there will be a lot of bills on the table with reimagining the way policing is done. And the legislature faces continued ongoing challenges around mental health and housing and things like rental assistance, where we're a month or so away from a pretty important cliff. With all of that, the composition of the state senate and the state house is really pretty much the same. We went into the general election season with the senate 28-21, majority Democrats, and the house 57-41. It's going to stay that way. There's one race in the fifth legislative district that's still 24 to 48 hours away from being called. One change we are going to see reflective of the state and the population we have is there are going to be more members of color than ever before. And I think Preeti alluded to the fact that maybe we have a wild card going on in the governor's mansion, depending on how President-elect Biden desires to fill out his cabinet. The current governor of Washington is certainly a name that's being mentioned. If you want to think about budgets that are more stable in this 2021 session, think about the Capitol budget. It's mostly done through bonding capacity, about $3 billion will be available for that. And so the Capitol budget will be one budget we know the legislature will look to as sort of a stimulus tool. It often is, if not always is, a bipartisan budget. And while I've sort of shared that most of the rules don't apply for this upcoming session, there are a few that do. It's still going to be a 105-day session, as it is in odd number of years. The legislature still has to get three by-annual budgets passed and balanced by the time they get out of town. The governor still has to deliver his proposed budgets and policy legislation by the third week of December. So looking into the priorities we have, and we've noted up above here, we don't have time for your agenda tonight to get into all the nitty-gritty of a lot of issues where we join others in supporting or opposing or tracking and monitoring things. But if you have questions about any of that, we've gone over the full agendas with all of you. If you have questions on that, we're happy to take them. So starting with what we call our quality of life priority in the Capitol budget, we have a seeking out of $1 million for a little over one mile of bicycle lane connections in the Cascade Benson Hill neighborhood. One we know has been infrastructure deficient since we inherited it back in 2008. And this section of 168th is really strategic because it crosses several schools. We'll go where the Future Family First Community Center is and also where the Suez Creek Trail will ultimately extend to. We also have a $1.3 million request, part of a phased request for work that has to be done under Department of Natural Resource requirements on the north part of the Coulon Walkway past Ivors. And the city is required to replace some of the concrete decking and area underneath with environmentally beneficial and light-penetrating material. And frankly, some of this project, if we don't do it, you know, we risk having the types of accidents where we saw, you know, along the Port of Seattle. And we don't want to see that happen with a Pier 58 type of accident. So this is a $1.3 million request. Lastly, I'll mention that the city, on a very good news front, the city teamed up with HealthPoint for a proposal in the, what's called the Building Communities Fund of the Capitol Budget and asked for money for Family First and specifically for the construction of the space inside the facility and has been recommended for a little over $3 million. So that's in the Capitol budget that'll come forward from the governor. We need to make sure it stays in there, but we have this item listed so that we apprise our legislative delegation of it. And one that the mayor directed that we really prioritize across all of our agendas and I think very much in keeping with a number of the discussions you've had as a council, and that's racial justice and equity and prioritizing that we want to be active seekers of funding and tools to help us bolster communities who need it, communities of color, underserved communities. And as I noted, that'll be across all the agendas. Transportation, even though we see a diminished number of drivers on the road, we know this issue remains very much at the heart of a lot of concerns and frustrations for citizens and freight haulers and buses and the like. And so we know that there's a very likely discussion around a potential transportation revenue package next year. And so we want to be ready with key projects for the Renton community. One that we've made some progress on is getting a direct access point on 405 at North East. And that's a $250 million project. We've worked very closely with several of our legislators, including Senator Saldana on that. In the 405-167 area where there's been great progress on the freeway structure with things like the connector, we still know there's a very difficult situation when you come off those interchange ramps. And we know there's going to be a bus rapid transit station in just a couple more years at Rainier and Grady. And so we've worked with DOT on a Grady Way overcrossing that can help save almost two minutes of peak travel time for bus rapid transit vehicles coming in and out of that BRT station. And then what used to be called the East Side Rail Corridor is now called East Rail. And there are several gaps in the East Rail between Renton and Woodinville, one of which, a key one being that the Renton part of the trail terminates, as you all know, at Mile Post 5. We think it's really important to extend it to Coulon and Southport where we can get very, very close to marrying it up with things like the Cedar River Trail and the Lake To Sound Trail. And so that's a $6 million gap that, you know, will join several other communities in asking for those funds for East Rail. And on our council, Councilmember Corman has served on the Regional Advisory Committee for the East Rail project. And then we want to be sure and speak loudly about key components of a package for local governments. If there's going to be an increase in fuel tax, for example, making sure some of that gets distributed down to cities and counties, making sure programs like the Transportation Improvement Board get enhanced funding for grants that are really mission-critical for cities like ours. And then local options that you all as a council can consider. From the fifth legislative district representative, Bill Ramos, is going to be net deep in the middle of all that. It's someone we work quite a bit with. And then an issue we're working on very closely with not only the State Department of Transportation, but our colleagues in the city of Kirkland, where both cities have an area of the city that involves DOT-owned property that if sold off can make for a very attractive transit-oriented development. But DOT has some real limitations and statute on how it's allowed to do that. And we're working on a bill that require, doesn't require them to do fair market value if, for example, there's going to be affordable housing woven in, doesn't any longer restrict them to having to replace every single parking stall on a one-to-one basis. So that's a bill that will be prime sponsored by Senator Derek Stanford in the senate and Representative Von Dennis Slater in the house. On the fiscal side, some things you've seen quite a few times before, but we're wanting to make sure that we're in there slugging away for revenue relief. And by that, we mean that if in addressing its budget shortfalls, the state looks at enacting new types of revenue and we've heard that some will be on the table, we want to urge that the state include cities and counties in the distribution of that revenue. At the same time, we've heard some talk and some potential proposals around a statewide payroll tax. You may remember that last session, there was a bill that dealt with a possible King County-wide payroll tax. And we have concerns with that at a time where businesses are really struggling and have announced some significant layoffs. We're not sure if this is the right time for a statewide payroll tax. A bread and butter item, we want to make sure we're arguing vociferously to protect existing state-share revenues. And we are poised to support an Association of Cities and Washington State Association of Counties bill that would give local governments ability to flex up certain types of revenues during the pandemic, things like real estate excise tax and criminal justice sales tax and lodging tax. And then I mentioned earlier, we know we will see a lot of bills that reexamine how policing is done. And we've had a lot of discussion of these over the last few months. And I know we're prepared to support many, many of them, whether that's independent use of force investigations, a strengthened decertification process. There's going to be a federal way area legislator who will have a bill banning chokeholds. One of our 33rd district legislators wants to pilot some ideas on mental health. The one caveat we've listed on the agenda, we think is a policy matter. We want to make sure that if bills are out there, they're achievable and they respect local discretion, that frankly, you all have to make sure you're keeping a direct hand on the day-to-day running of law enforcement agencies. Moving on to our regional agenda, several of these are top priority carryovers from a year ago. But we continue to want to take a very active role in looking at King County Metro and where the emphasis on new metro service is in the wake of the pandemic. One of the things we've seen very graphically is that South King County has been an area where the ridership has dropped off least during COVID-19. And we see that as real evidence that we have a lot of transit-dependent people in our community. And so we've appreciated the metro emphasis on bringing the Rapid Ride I-line in by 2023. It's supposed to start construction. And our camp is Alphabet Soup for Renton-Kent Auburn Area Mobility Plan. And that has some good additions in service for our area. And so we want to keep the pressure on to keep those things going. Sound Transit, you've talked about it a handful of times as a council. We want to push for ensuring that in the Rainier and Grady Station, it's accommodating future light rail in its design. We've talked about 405 and 167 and the need for improvements to help the flow of buses in and out of the station. We're in the midst of conversations with Sound Transit now about where the Park and Ride for 405 and 44th and what's going to be called the Seahawk Station is located. And ultimately, if there's going to be mixed-use development at the, what we call the Panabot Site, we want to make sure that can accommodate structured parking. Puget Sound Regional Council, we've listed here. We've tended to be very active in pursuing federal pass-through grants and dollars. We want to continue to do that. And we've talked about East Rail and addressing the gaps in the system there. On the affordable housing and homelessness side, you've had many conversations about the Red Lion. We want to continue to work to find permanent supportive housing and in an appropriately zoned location for those 235 residents. We've tried to be compassionate hosts, but we continue to have concerns about whether the site that's there now is the right one for the long term. The Sunset area, a lot of great progress through the city's transformation strategy. And we want to continue to look for partnerships with Renton Housing Authority, South King Housing and Homelessness Partnership, and a new entity on the scene, Microsoft. And then we have a to-do item with particularly the homeless feeding program and the cold weather shelter that, as you know, is stationed at the 300 building at the edge of the airport. That is a temporary site. We've been in discussions with Providence Health about a more permanent site. We're excited about that. We want to partner with Reach and other faith-based organizations that put these programs together. On the parks and trails and youth services side, obviously Family First Community Center, and you'll see this replicated on our federal agenda. You know, as we get closer to constructing and opening this landmark facility, we want to explore all the outside funding options we can. This $3 million one I mentioned earlier is a terrific down payment on that. And then we worked very hard a year ago to get particular items included in the countywide parks levy that passed with voters. And we want to assure those things like the Suez Creek Trail extension and East Rail funds and possible grant monies that we can pursue for the Henry Moses Aquatic Center stay intact in the levy program. Flood control, we've worked very hard with council members, Dunn and Up the Grove in particular, on key project needs. And we want to continue to do that. And I've noted here, one of the success stories is that we worked with our county council members to expedite greatly the date where the Black River Pump Station is going to be replaced. So that'll be an important project. On the mental health and regional homelessness side and the new regional homelessness authorities, we want to make sure Renton is an active and regular participant at the table on those discussions. Councilmember Prince plays a role here as part of the governing board for the new regional homelessness authority. I mentioned racial justice and equity. And again, the mayor directed that that's to be a priority across all of our agendas. Human services obviously captures some of these topics we've talked about, but we want to continue to be a partner with nonprofits and faith-based entities and pursue dollars in areas like Veterans Seniors Human Services Levy, Best Start for Kids and other areas to benefit the Renton community. In arts and culture, we've tried to be more intentional about queuing up projects to compete for for culture dollars, particularly as for culture in the next few years begins to get more of the lodging tax and workforce housing money that goes to King County under a state law passed several years ago. And I'll say here too, I think we're helped by the fact that Preeti sits on a statewide board for Imagine Washington, which is very involved in promoting the needs of the arts. On the solid waste side, the mayor and council have been very vocal about our concerns with what's called the Option 3 location in the Highlands for a proposed facility support and operations center. You know, we want to keep our nose to the grindstone on that one. We're also at the table for a lot of talks on what types of expanded role there might be for reclaimed water use within King County, if that's going to be the case. Renton, the Cascade Water Alliance, Seattle have all banded together and made it clear that we want to make sure that the financial impacts to municipal utilities are looked at and that water quality is very strictly looked at. And then one that's new to the agenda that we've worked with a couple of you on, I know Councilmember O'Halloran in particular, and that's working with Puget Sound Energy to ensure that residents and businesses, as well as the city itself, can be poised to enroll in some of the next phases, including Phase 3, what PSE calls its Green Direct Program to incentivize the use of green power. Finally, taking a spin through the federal agenda, we talked at the very beginning about COVID-19 revenue relief. We continue to push our congressional delegation to include in a relief package direct and flexible money for state and local governments. You know, as much as we appreciate the CARES Act money, as you all know, it cannot be used for revenue loss. It must be used for impacts related to COVID-19 pandemic itself. We're also, we've worked on queuing up a list of projects for what we understand to be a very potential or likely stimulus package in Congress next year. We've been on the record several times that we want to actively support updating the Federal Transportation Act, and that includes some significant increases in formula funding for Washington State. Again, on the federal level, we have a meeting coming up with Congressman Smith where we want to ask about whether there are federal dollars that we might be able to tap into on the racial justice and equity front. And Renton Airport is near top of mind federally because we have access to some FAA dollars and FEMA grants. We're what's known as a buy contract tower airport. So the funding for that program that's appropriated by Congress is important to us on an annual basis. And then there's some pending legislation that makes it easier for our types of airports to hire air traffic controllers that we've been very supportive of. Again, the Sunset area, as we listed on our other agenda, and Family First, we want to look for federal opportunities for those. This next one is a catch-all to ensure that we've got set in our sights that we continue to look for grant funding at the federal level across a number of fronts. On the land and water conservation fund, we're actually recommended for dollars for a Coulon project in this latest round of what's called LWCF. And then one that Jan-Hahn and the folks at ASD brought to us, and that's supporting some of the Government Finance Officers Association initiatives around protecting tax-exempt and bank-qualified municipal bonds and what's called advanced refunding issuance of bonds. So quickly, next steps. If this count, if these agendas are acceptable to you, we would look to have council formally adopt and pass them. We are intending to meet with all of our lawmakers from six legislative districts that either have the city of Renton in them or near them in these first couple of weeks of December. Preeti, I think, alluded to this, but we have a new member in the 11th District, Representative-elect Tackney. We have a new member in the 37th District, Representative-elect Kirsten Harris-Tally. And we have a fifth district senate race that is 36 votes apart. We'll learn in the next 24 to 48 hours who the state senator is from that district. It'll be a Democrat. It's just which one? And then, as always, we want to make sure we're joining hands with other Renton stakeholders. I think the council's been very intentional about wanting us to do that. So the Chamber, schools, Valley Medical, and the like. And then we would be very interested in your feedback on whether we do a virtual day in Olympia. As you all know, you're very used to doing a physical day on the hill in Olympia. We can't do that in 2021, but we certainly can work with you on a virtual day if you see value in doing that. And we can talk about that either now or as we get closer to session. And with that, happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Doug. I really appreciate this presentation. Councilmember, you have any questions? Could you please raise your hands? And I would appreciate, Doug, if you do not share your screen, so I can see.
Absolutely.
So that way I can see the councilmembers. Thank you. So again, do you have any questions or comments or concerns? I see none at this time, Doug. I do have a question. What can you tell us about this district?
That's going to really gear up in 2021. And it's funny, Council President Perez, I was thinking- I was thinking about that question the other day. I think we have a to-do item here. One of the things I've certainly heard in some conversations with some of you is we have a lot of legislative districts, and that can be a good thing in some regard, but it can also be a hindrance in that we have some legislative districts where Renton is a part of them, but only a small part of them, and so it can be difficult to get attention. So frankly, I want to be sure I'm taking solid direction from the seven of you and the mayor as to what our wants and needs are in redistricting. The year after I started representing Renton a couple of decades ago, in the redistricting that followed the 2000 elections, the direction was, give us fewer legislative districts. We have six, it's too much. And at that time, we got it down to three, and now it's creeped back up to four or five. So I'm interested in your direction and your perspectives on that.
Thank you. I don't know what are the thoughts of the other councilmembers. I just can share that I know that lately, you have to say it, there are goods and bads, you know, of having that many, and especially when on the fifth, we just have one precinct. But it's also great to be able sometimes, you know, to bring our concerns to as many legislators as possible, you know, to make sure that everybody understands what our issues. But at the same time, you also want legislators that don't have that many cities, so they take Renton very, very serious. So I'm both ways. Any other councilmembers have any comments about this?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Corman.
Yeah, I kind of remember those discussions way back also, and I don't know, I guess I'm not concerned that we're in so many districts now because we've grown so much. You know, at the time, when we were a city of like 50,000 or 60,000, it seemed like it was pretty diluted, but now we're over 100 and growing. It just seems like we, it's not as big of a concern to me as it used to be.
Anyone else have any thoughts? Councilmember Kirby.
Yes, thank you. So I feel like we've been pretty successful with how we've had it, so it's kind of one of those if it isn't broke, don't fix it sort of things. I tend to agree with Councilmember Corman that, you know, it's probably less of a concern given our size now. I think the real key is, and this is the part we can't really control, is, you know, if there was one legislative district that was predominantly Renton, that would ensure that there was someone who really does identify with Renton, and I think that would probably help a lot more versus having folks who represent Renton but reside in other portions of the district and feel maybe like that's not as much of their district. So I don't know if there's a, I'm not too concerned with messing with it too much. You know, I think we'll probably, however it stacks out, probably align pretty well, but that seems to be the crux of the concern for me, if there is.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman. Any more questions or concerns regarding the legislative agenda? Any thoughts about the virtual meetings? What I heard, Doug, is that some of the legislators do not want to be in front of Zoom all day long, so that they are not going to be giving that many appointments. I don't know how this is going to be handled. So I don't know how successful we will be asking for virtual meetings. Of course, every single time that we have a chance to talk one-on-one with our legislators and bring our agenda, I think it's of value and it's important. So from my take, if we can get a space to get there, I will be interested, but I don't know what my colleagues thinks about this.
But, Council President, one of the things we're doing is meeting with them, you know, prior to session, so once we get, you know, your approval on our priorities, we've already got a lot of meetings established with our representatives in December, even before session starts, so that we have like, you know, heads up with them, so we can kind of share ahead of time before they are crowded with other priorities, so we can brief them on what's important for us. So that itself is, you know, part of our strategy. And then, of course, when session starts, we'll try to be as strategic as possible, understanding that, you know, there'll be days they'll be bombarded with others. So firstly, having spent, you know, quality time one-on-one with them, with our agenda, and then we strategize in a way, this will be new to for everybody, but, you know, so that we can strategize in a way that we're not one of a crowd, but that, you know, we do this smartly to, you know, really work with them in a way that is productive and effective for them.
I did understand that, Preeti, but I thought that what Doug asked was that, besides the meeting one-on-one with the mayor, he was asking that if during our regular, what we call the City Action Days, if we were going to be looking to also schedule an addition at, instead I misunderstood you, Doug?
No, we are interested in your input on that, and so we appreciate that. I think, Madam Council President, you're right, there will be certain legislators who don't want to do continuous Zoom meetings throughout the day. It's really being left to the individual legislators how they want to conduct their constituent stakeholder, local community meetings, so some of this we'll be learning on the go. I will say, and I really want to credit you, Madam Council President, I think where Renton tends to excel is in building bridges with not only our own legislators, but those above and beyond, strictly having Renton in their district, and I think a really valuable time we spent at last session, Senator Win, which, you know, you had a large hand in helping to arrange. So I've always appreciated that about this council, that, you know, it looks at creative ways to build bridges.
Okay. Any thoughts about this from other councilmembers?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember.
So I'd just like to do, you know, whatever is the most effective, obviously, and I guess I feel a lot like maybe Doug and Preeti could give us insight, you know, if, what format would work best, or maybe different legislators. I want to be respectful if it helps us to be, you know, be respectful of their getting Zoom fatigue, I want to be respectful. You know, one thing maybe we could do that might be a little bit different is for those of us that are serving in regional capacities, maybe there's opportunities where we have one-on-one calls with legislators that we might not have had to touch base and strategize, but it's hard to emulate sort of that. I mean, that's a unique time when we go as a group and have those face-to-face in their office. It's sort of, it builds camaraderie, and it feels like we're an important part of the process when we do that. Obviously, those individual discussions are not necessarily that strategic in that format. You can't really get that deep, but it is, it's a bonding experience, and it's a good way to remind them that Renton's here and we need them. So it's not quite obvious to me what the replacement for that is, but maybe some one-on-one conversations with some of us to go a little deeper than usual. I don't know.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman.
Yeah, even there, we, you know, we staged our day in a different day, and that kind of helped us stand out from the crowd. So I don't know if there's something like that we can plan with our Zoom.
I agree with Councilmember Corman. I want to be very respectful. We have experienced how challenging it has been, you know, to move from the dais to the Zoom meetings, and even with that, we know that it's not the same. We conduct business, which is what keep the city moving forward, but it's not the ideal format that I would prefer to conduct business as a councilmember. And I know that the legislators are going to be very challenged, you know, it's going to be very challenging for the first months, because doesn't matter how much you practice, it's a completely new, different format of conducting this kind of business. So I am with Councilmember, I want to be very respectful. I mean, if you guys take the temperature of the room and feel that there is a need to, you know, to keep in touch with them and be on the table, and if there, some of them, I know that they really want to be in touch with us. I know that some of them always ask, when are you going to come to visit us, you know? So take the temperature about how many of them really want to be, or no, it's not that they don't want, but like Councilmember Corman said, I mean, the Zoom fatigue is something real. So based on that, I will be looking forward to hear from you recommendation of this. Any more questions or comments regarding our legislative agenda? Councilmember McCurbin.
Yeah, I just had a kind of on that same lines. I wonder if Zoom doesn't provide us a different opportunity than we had before, because going down there and presenting the agenda as a council, I think is really a way of showing that we care, we back the agenda, it shows a little bit of buy-in. And obviously, it wouldn't make as much sense to scatter multiple days, but there does come up times later strategically in session where we may need to have a conversation here or talk to this legislature over there. And I'm wondering if a sprinkling of councilmembers over time, as deemed necessary by staff, would be a more effective strategy than just piling us all on one Zoom session at once? So I think we can kind of just see how things are going, and if it seems like we need to have follow-up conversations, I think that makes sense to do, but the one big day, I don't know that we're going to get a lot of value out of that.
Thank you, Councilmember McCurbin. Well, I think we have a strong legislative agenda. There are some things in this agenda that are very important for us and others that are, have a lot of value for the quality of life that we have been working very hard to bring to these communities. So I really want to thank Preeti and Doug for all the work that you guys have done, and please keep us in the loop to make sure that we are all in the same page about how things are moving forward with this new, you know, challenge that it's going to be the 2021 legislative session. Thank you very much again.
Thank you. Thanks for your great input.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next in our agenda, we have Sunset Neighborhood Services Center and Conseco Council Services update. I want to welcome Marsha Antonio-Johnson, Community Development and Housing Manager. Hi, Mark.
Hi. Thank you, Madam President, councilmembers. It's my great privilege tonight to join with representatives from five of the organizations that partnered with the city over the past seven years to successfully acquire, design, renovate, and open the Sunset Neighborhood Center. I will provide background information regarding the project, and the six other people listed here will each be sharing information regarding their organization's role and efforts related to the center. I will share in more detail on future slides, but our journey together with our partners to create the Sunset Neighborhood Center began in 2014 with the Community Needs Assessment, the creation of the Sunset Area Transformation Plan, and efforts to refine the vision and secure the resources to establish the center. For reference, the Sunset area is part of the Renton Highlands and Northeast Renton. The redevelopment of the Renton Housing Authority's former 100-unit Sunset Terrace Public Housing Property has been the core of our revitalization efforts over the past 10 years. It currently is the site of the new Renton Highlands Library, the new Sunset Neighborhood Park, and the future home for market rate and affordable housing. The Sunset Neighborhood Center is located on Northeast 12th Street in the former Renton Highlands Library in the center of the Sunset Area community. Next. The Sunset area has a population of about 3,500 residents, slightly more than 10% of the Renton Highlands population. The community has nearly two-thirds people of color, one-fourth Hispanic residents, and 15% of the residents are 65 years old and over, all greater percentages than the city as a whole. The median household income is almost 30% lower than Renton, and the poverty rate is twice the city average. Next. In 2014, the city completed the first-ever Renton Community Needs Assessment for human services and housing, along with a Sunset Area Addendum. The Sunset Area Assessment identified several significant community challenges and needs, including barriers to employment, lack of culturally sensitive services, a need for mental health and substance abuse services, and a lack of access to health services. To respond to the needs identified in the assessment, the city, Renton Housing Authority, and Neighborhood House envisioned and started working together to establish a multi-service center in the Sunset area. Our original plan was for RHA to acquire a couple small parcels near the former Sunset Terrace Public Housing Project site, on what we call the node between the Glenwood Avenue and Harrington Avenue, excuse me, on the north side of the Sunset Neighborhood Park. In 2015 and 16, the city, King County Housing Authority, Renton Housing Authority, Renton School District, Neighborhood House, more than 20 partners came together to create the Sunset Area Transformation Plan and to apply twice for a $30 million U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant. The plan included three primary areas: housing, people, and neighborhood strategies. The Sunset Multi-Service Center and Core Development Center was an integral part of both the people and neighborhood strategies. However, since the former Renton Highlands Library was going to be vacant shortly, the group decided with the city's support to use part of the requested HUD grant to purchase the former library for the center, make modest renovations, and to repurpose the facility as a multi-service center beginning in mid-2017. Next. For context, the city annexed the King County Library System in 2010. The city and KCLS worked together to build the new Renton Highlands Library as a cornerstone of the Sunset Terrace redevelopment. The new library opened in March 2016 and is a wonderful beacon and welcoming place to help people in our community succeed through ideas, interaction, and information. Next. As noted earlier, the city agreed to sell the former Renton Highlands Library to the Renton Housing Authority as part of the Sunset Area Transformation Plan. Although the city's Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant application was a finalist in 2015, the project unfortunately did not secure a grant in either 2015 or 2016. Consequently, the city and our partners decided to move forward to implement as much of the plan as possible with other resources. The multi-service center was a key part of that work over the past four years. Next. The original plan to use the library only included about $300,000 for modest facility improvements for the standard. As you will hear from Neighborhood House next, the partners started raising capital funds in 2017 for a more substantial renovation of the building. In 2018, Skamata Workshop held a design charrette with two dozen participants from our partner organizations. As a result of that effort and additional analysis of the building, the renovation plan was significantly modified to include private confidential spaces for providing services and comprehensive building system improvements. The city's AmeriCorps Vista members also convened a Sunset Area Neighborhood Action Committee in 2018 to help plan for and support the future center. Next. We would not have been able to do an extensive renovation of the former library without the leadership, dedication, and perseverance of Neighborhood House as our capital campaign lead. Tonight, we have James Lovell, Director of Development and Advancement for Neighborhood House, here to share information about their efforts.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you to the members of the council for having us here. I wanted to give a little background on Neighborhood House, just on the way we do services, our approach to the work, and then talk about the campaign specifically. So we are a multi-service nonprofit, mostly human services with a relational touch. We don't do a lot of basic needs usually, however, in COVID-19, everyone's kind of had to pick up doing a lot more basic needs, distribution. A lot of our work is really focused on building relationships with families, individuals. We have about $12 million a year in early learning programs that we run, and then with the other $12 million or so of the agency's annual budget is focused on a really wide range of services for communities that are experiencing poverty, so youth and family services, aging and disability services, housing stability, community health, and I'm forgetting one, which is perfect timing, of course. So, but really, a big part of our approach is place-based, and so we were founded in 1906 in Yessler Terrace in Seattle, and that's stuck with us. We were part of a movement around the time of settlement houses. And in 2005, we built our first facility in the Rainier Vista communities, so this is one of the Seattle Housing Authority-owned kind of garden communities in southeast Seattle. And we built it with the idea of really being able to offer lots of services from one location. And then following that, in 2009, we opened our High Point facility, which had the same philosophy of offering lots of different kinds of services, but also creating some, some community meeting spaces for folks, so that it was more than just a, a suites of offices or classrooms. And that's kind of, that's, I think, the background. We've, we've helped with King County Housing Authority on multiple capital campaigns as well, including the, the Wiley Center at Green Bridge, where we provide a number of services. So that's, that's kind of us and our approach to place-based in, in the quickest way we can say it. This project was really interesting. I was actually on the board for Neighborhood House when it first started, and then I, now I joined staff two and a half years ago. And really, the, the folks you see listed there are, to be thanked as well, are, are three AmeriCorps Vista volunteers that have been working on the project. One just started, but the other two really led the way. And it was challenging because when you do a capital campaign, you often will have, you know, you'll see these big advertisements, you'll see folks coming together for a launch party, or there'll be a gala that, you know, every dollar goes towards the new community center. But because we weren't raising the money for our own agency, and because of the way that this capital campaign had to be structured, it was a silent campaign. And so it doesn't mean we didn't talk about it. And certainly, the city of Renton heard us talk about it when we came to, to council and when you granted funds. But we weren't out there trying to attract lots of small donations. We really worked on getting as much funding as we could from a few big places or a few, few big amounts. And so there was an initial gift from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, who, who don't, who do not do capital campaigns until they do, is kind of how we, they've just decided they wanted to do it. So they kind of kicked it off with the, with the bigger gifts coming in, as well as a number of times that we went back. Doug Levy mentioned the Building Communities Fund, and that fund actually contributed as well to this campaign. So we had some, we had, there's a really cool opportunity right now in Renton in that we've got two really incredible facilities and approaches that are being developed at the same time, in that we have the Sunset Neighborhood Center, and we're also, there is the Family First Center. That also meant that there was just a, a little bit more of effort needed to keep folks' attention on, uh, keep, with divided attention, folks had to be really aware of what the needs were in Sunset, and we had to push the campaign, Neighborhood House had to push the campaign fairly aggressively down in Olympia to make sure that we got the funds from the Building Communities Funds. It's, this is kind of our bread and butter, is finding a place and making a really long-term promise and commitment. It's why we do so much federal grant money as an agency. And we think of Sunset Neighborhood Center, when you look at who's there, this is a really cool promise that the partners have made to the, the Renton Highlands broadly, but especially to Sunset, to say, this is a center for you to come to. It has community, communal spaces for folks to use, as well as dedicated spaces. We were really pretty close, and then we're looking at a big gap, and at the last minute, some really good support from our folks at the Rent Innovation Zone Partnership helped get the attention of the Ballmer Group to bring in another $500,000 just in the last six months, even after we'd already broken ground and construction had started. And then also a lot of support from, it was really important for us, as with any capital campaign, it's good to get some big chunks from the, the state government and from some private folks. But when the First Financial Northwest Foundation came in, it really helped folks, it helped us demonstrate that this was something that the local community wanted and needed, which is important for us as, as a provider who only offers one service in, in the Sunset Neighborhood right now. It was a little challenging for us to be able to make the lift without some other good local buy-in. So really wanted to express appreciation to the legislators. So Representative Steve Bergquist, in particular, was our champion from the House, and Senator Bob Hasagawa was our, our state champion, our, our state senate champion, as well as the city of Renton, who partnered the whole way, and we're really proud of the effort and glad we got to work so closely with Renton Housing Authority, with whom we already have an existing service relationship for our aging and disability services. Can't hear you, Mark. Mark?
I apologize to the Renton Housing Authority. There are two figures transposed on this slide, but the Housing Authority provided $875,000 for the acquisition of the building and the land, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation provided $600,000. Thank you, James, and for you, to you and your team for your efforts. Next. As the capital campaign moved forward, RHA, the city, and Neighborhood House worked to confirm the service providers for the new center. When HealthPoint confirmed their plans to establish a major health clinic at the site, along with the other service providers who are part of tonight's presentation, we had a clear path to move forward. Next. RHA selected Miller Hayashi Architects to design the project, and a new floor plan was created to effectively address the partners' needs. Next. RHA will share more information about the building's service areas shortly, but here are a couple renderings of the proposed project. Next. The Sunset Neighborhood Center would not exist without the strong collaboration, leadership, commitment, and dedication of the Renton Housing Authority. Tonight, we have Maria Shewitt, the Sunset Neighborhood Center Coordinator, and Millie Phong, Development Specialist from RGA, here to share information regarding RHA's efforts to design, renovate, and operate the center.
Thanks, Mark. Can we go to the next slide, please? Thank you, Hannah. So the Sunset Neighborhood Center's key partners include the city of Renton, Neighborhood House, and Renton Housing Authority. The city of Renton has been a key supporter of the Sunset Neighborhood Center from its initial concept and has been committed to revitalizing the Sunset Neighborhood for years. Their efforts are proven in the Sunset Community Revitalization Plan, through their development of the Sunset Area Transformation Plan, their role in the Choice Neighborhoods Grant Applications, and their facilitation with service provider outreach and partnership development efforts for the Sunset Neighborhood Center. Neighborhood House has provided case management and referral services directly to our residents for years and are committed to doing more work in Renton. As part of their dedication to this SNC, Neighborhood House has taken the initiative to lead the capital campaign, which raised public and private funding for the center's renovations, as Mark mentioned, transforming the former library into a center that houses a variety of human services responding to the Community Needs Assessment that the city put on in 2014. Renton Housing Authority's mission is to provide quality, affordable housing to those who are in need in Renton, as well as promote self-sufficient living by connecting residents to essential human services. As part of, as part of our commitment of connecting our residents to services, we purchased the former library from the city. Since then, the Housing Authority has facilitated efforts to design and renovate the building and has committed to being the owner and leasing manager of the space. The successful partnership is living proof that with public and private partnerships, we can have a positive impact on our communities. We are very grateful to have developed the wonderful relationships with the city of Renton and Neighborhood House, and are extremely proud of our collective efforts to make our longtime vision of the Sunset Neighborhood Center come to life. As a public entity, we're required to conduct a public bid solicitation selection process. These can be in the form of VOPRAS for a proposal, RFP, VOPRAS for qualifications, RFQ. Contractors and consultants are selected based on their project and team experience, responsiveness, and cost efficiency. Through these public bid processes, we selected Miller Hayashi Architects, Charter Construction as a general contractor, and J.H. Bronner as their development consultant. Miller Hayashi Architects has previous experience with designing community, health, and education centers, but most notably HealthPoint's clinics. Their team was a very detailed and skilled set of individuals that understood the programming and directive, delivered on exceptional product on schedule and within budget. They listened to and implemented during design phase of what social service and provider needs and requirements were, along with RHA's objective goals in mind. Charter Construction has generations of experience in development of residential and commercial projects. From working with Charter on other projects such as the Sunset Oaks Workforce Development Housing, we were able to develop shared processes and styles of communication. Charter Construction was a GC that cared about the project and understood our mission. Their team was always troubleshooting problems as they came up with solutions and recommendations to keep the project within budget and on schedule. Renovation work in older facilities always has unknowns. Charter's team was ahead of the game in identifying conditions and worked well with not only to provide recommendations, but also to find costs and troubleshooting for cost savings. J.H. Bronner Company has been Renton Housing Authority's financial development consultant for many projects, including rehabilitation, modernization of Golden Cedars and Renton Crest projects, Sunset Court, Sunset Oaks, and more recently Sunset Gardens. They provided the Housing Authority with food and sherry, advising to assist the agency with maximizing its mission and while ensuring fiscally responsible outcomes. Their experience with working with other public housing authorities on similar projects and other similar scope has allowed them to clearly understand our mission and the scope of our wide range of projects. We are very grateful for our SNC design and development teams and for their efforts to making the process smooth and efficient. We couldn't have asked for a better team for this project. Next. Is Maria there? Is it my turn?
No.
Maria Shewitt?
Maria Shewitt from the Housing Authority.
Can't, can't hear you, Maria, but we can see you're trying.
You're still muted, Maria.
Maria, could you try to disable your video and see if your audio will work? Mark, do you want to pick it up from here? I, I can't hear Maria.
Millie, do you want to speak to these slides?
Um, sure.
Thank you. Sorry, Maria.
Yeah, so the Sunset Neighborhood Center is a LEED-certified building, which stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. Because it is a LEED-certified building, it consists of features that are energy-efficient. Next. Some of the features include sustainable materials that were constructed, energy-efficient lights and HVAC system, large windows to let in daylight and reduce lighting costs. So there were several windows added into the building, installation of energy-star rated windows and appliances, and water-saving fixtures. Service partners include HealthPoint, Neighborhood House, Belly Cities, St. Vincent de Paul, and Renton Housing Authority. Sorry, there's a typo on the slides. So looking at this floor plan, the top of the floor plan is HealthPoint's exam rooms and their clinic space, as well as their pharmacy. To the right is the offices and meeting rooms for Neighborhood House, Central Rendu, and Renton Housing Authority. So the bottom right, we have the multi-purpose room where each service provider is able to lease out the space based off of what is available on the calendar at the time. And to your left on the bottom is Central Rendu's classroom space, as well as a small childcare area. And in the center, we have the reception and lobby area. And down at the bottom in the center, we have the vestibule, and to the left, we have the men's and women's restroom. So using the same floor plan outline, building footprint. So Renton Housing Authority's presence at the Sunset Neighborhood includes onsite coordination of service providers, which is Maria Shewitt's role, and a facility cleaning and maintenance. So we will be managing the space, and we will have our own maintenance crew onsite to perform cleaning and making sure that maintenance is kept up on track. We will also have an office space for coast management, and that is our property management company that we're currently working with for a couple of our properties. Specifically, they will be managing our Sunset Court Affordable Housing Project of 50 units, and that is just a couple blocks away from where the Sunset Neighborhood Center, and they will provide recertifications for our current residents and leasing of the building. Next. So the total project cost is $3.8 million. Land and building is total of $885,000, which is the acquisition call that Renton Housing Authority has committed. And HealthPoint has also provided their own furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and paid estimated $40,000 for additional improvements for primarily addressed COVID-19 service needs, as well as assistance with landscaping and making it that more accessible. And now I'll show you some of the floor. Well, this folder right here, is that you, Maria? Can you, are you able to speak to this? No? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Maria, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I apologize for that. I don't know what was going on with my microphone. Okay, so this area here is the, a part of the, the old building, and this is where the offices are right now. We still, we have, still have this window, but this would be like a hallway, and the offices are on the sides. We have the first office here. Well, actually, we have the break room right here, and then we have the, the offices. We have Belly Cities and Neighborhood House and Central Rendu has an office also. And then we have another office on this side for management for the, for coast, and then my office on the corner. This is where the art used to be. This is the area where HealthPoint is located now. Next. This is the part of the lobby, the lobby and the vestibule. This on this side, and this, this is a classroom here. And ta, 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 the new photos. This is the, the art, this is the lobby, this is part of the lobby. We still haven't got the, the lobby furniture, but this is part of the lobby. We have the art here, and we have a, another, another panel on the other side. These are the offices. Next. Part of the lobby and the vestibule here, and the restrooms are on the, on this side. And this is, of course, some HealthPoint reception. These are, this is inside HealthPoint. These are their exam rooms and offices. This is an office for HealthPoint. And this is the, the classroom for Central Rendu. Beautiful classroom.
Thank you, Maria and Millie.
I apologize again. I apologize again.
That's my problem. Prior to opening the center, RHA chose to change the name from the original and much longer Sunset Multi-Service and Career Development Center to the Sunset Neighborhood Center. After seven years of collaboration, creativity, and perseverance with our partners, Health Point started providing services at the new Sunset Neighborhood Center on Monday, October 12th. And a grand opening celebration with onsite drive-through resource event was held on October 27th. Next. Health Point has the largest presence at the Sunset Neighborhood Center, both in terms of space and staff. Jas Malhe, the Health Point Business Director from Renton Area Clinics, is here to share more information with you regarding Health Point and their services at the center.
Thanks, Mark. Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for having me today. Hannah, next slide please. All right, so as Mark mentioned, we are the largest partner in the building. We are at the south side of the building, about 2,500 square feet. We do have a shared lobby and greeter screening area. So now because of COVID, we do have a sort of kiosk to desk, but at the front, when anyone enters, we are making sure to screen anyone that's walking through the building. The large space is mostly due to the exam rooms. We needed, the more exam rooms, the better, right? So we have six exam rooms. One of those are a larger exam room, which we are calling Procedure Room, has an adjustable table so that we can do procedures in clinic instead of sending them to our other downtown Renton site. One of the exam rooms right now is being used as a respiratory room. And so that is actually at the end of the building where there is an exit. So if anyone is having respiratory symptoms or might need COVID testing, we can walk them through the outside of the building to keep them away from everyone else and just directly enter into that exam room. We have three offices, which includes managers, a behavioral health consultant, which is generally a psychologist that's onsite, and a client services representative. And that role is to offer patients insurance assistance, you know, multiple resources, food, housing, social services. We also have an open provider and medical pod, which I'll show pictures later, but that allows for the, the medical assistants and the providers to work together. And the open concept was so that patients can see, you know, the interactions between providers and medical assistants. We also have one lab, that was one of the open space that Maria had a picture of earlier, and a workroom. And the workroom is, you know, copier, fax machine, whatnot, and just extra workstation space. Next slide please, thank you. So this is one of our flyers actually for the clinic, kind of, you know, shows our hours, which are Monday through Friday, eight to five, and the services that we offer. So we are offering full family services, so for all ages. We have immunizations and vaccines that we have onsite, annual exams. We have a nurse that offers diabetes education. We don't have a nutritionist onsite, but now with, you know, virtual health, we are able to connect them to a nutritionist if a patient walks in and needs that service. We also have interpreters onsite, as well as virtual interpreters. And as I mentioned before, the client service rep to help patients apply for insurance. We don't have a full pharmacy onsite, and usually that decision is due to the number of pharmacies in the area, as well as space in the clinic. Unfortunately, there just wasn't enough space to have a full pharmacy. But what we do have in our immune room is a medication cabinet that has specific locks and whatnot on it for us to keep specialty medications onsite. Those are kind of the expensive medications, the ones you don't want to mail to patients in case they get stolen. So patients really do enjoy having that. But our biggest way to have pharmacy services is doing mail orders. And our patients really enjoy that. We did have conversations about providing dentistry onsite, so we'd be using one of the exam rooms and have a mobile dental station. Right now, we're still at Health Point in general, still picking up on dental services. So timeline on that is to be determined. And as I mentioned earlier, all of our other services in terms of nutritionists or clinical pharmacists, we don't have onsite or have them budgeted in this clinic, but we can always connect them to a different site. Next slide please. So hours of operation right now are Monday through Friday, eight to five. But once we are fully staffed and able to offer extended hours, we will be open seven days a week, limited hours on the weekends. Next please. In terms of staffing, currently, we are still recruiting for a nurse practitioner, but right now we have one full medical, or MDFTE. And right now, that's being split between four different providers. And these are doctors that are working at our downtown Renton location. Really, that's because we had to hire a new provider for this site and didn't want to just throw them in there, want to make sure that they, you know, can get their experience and will slowly make it so that there's only one provider there a day. And I'm sorry, no, that's not accurate. Right now, there is one provider a day, but eventually, once we get fully staffed, our goal is to have two medical providers, that is one MDFTE, one nurse practitioner. We do have a behavioral health consultant. She was coming onsite once a week to be a part of the team and to offer in-person visits. But just because of COVID and things safer, she is working from home. So we do have a psychologist here, if you will, five days a week. We have three medical assistants, three front office staff, one client service rep. Leadership in terms of management and supervisors is shared between our downtown Renton site and Sunset. So we rotate to make sure someone's onsite every day. And then languages spoken by staff are Spanish, Russian, and Vietnamese. And did want to share that actually, the majority of staff working here do have a connection to the Sunset area. A couple were raised in the area, one lives down the street. I myself grew up coming to the library here, so it's really special for the staff that works here. Visits, so this is just a month of data, 206 visits. So I know you might wonder, is that good, is that bad? And actually, that's really good. And so right now, our schedules are slower than they are at our other sites. And that's just because with the new site, we wanted to make sure, you know, we're working out the technology issues, our computers are working well. There's always some sort of glitch with our EHR system unfortunately. So just until we can smooth out all the kinks, we're going to keep schedules at a patient every 30 minutes. But generally, it's, every patient has 15 minutes with a provider. And so usually, a provider that's fully ramped up and has a full open schedule will see about 30 patients a day. So right now, we're about at 16. And so every month, we're going to pick that up a little bit. And we're already getting a number of folks walking in for visits. Have been marketing a lot, so I'm really glad people know we're in the community. We actually have about 800 patients that go to our downtown Renton office that live in the Sunset area, and some of them have already transferred care. They're really excited that the doctor they see in downtown Renton is now working here. So I feel like we're building some good connections and are excited about that. Here's the lobby again. Next slide. And just wanted to share some photos from the community. Our front office staff went out and did some marketing and just, you know, wanted to put the word out there that we're open. So she went into a few restaurants and grocery stores and obviously got their permission, but just wanted to share that. Next please. Some of the clinic photos here, so on the bottom right in the middle picture is that MA provider pod I was mentioning with our sit-stand desks that everyone loves and get to work together. Next please. And our staff and patient photos, those are staff and providers that work with us and patients we've seen at both locations now. Next. This probably should have gone first, but yes, we open on October 12th. The, this is just our naming Health Point, we have multiple different names for it, but our name is Health Point Sunset Neighborhood Center. Next please. And that is all, I believe. Thank you.
Okay, I guess it's my turn. Right, Mark? I can't hear you, but.
Sorry. Thank you Jas and your team, and very exciting to have a clinic there. And I'll introduce Maria next. As I noted earlier, nearly 25% of the residents in the Sunset area and many more residents in the surrounding Highlands community are Hispanic. Tonight, we have Maria Munoz Roach, Executive Director of St. Vincent de Paul, here to describe Central Rendu's efforts to serve the Latino community in the Sunset area and beyond.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, members of the council, Mayor Pabon. St. Vincent de Paul has been around for 100 years, this year, 2020 marks 100 years. And when, when James was speaking about neighbor care and Neighborhood House and how they are about building relationships and serving people experiencing poverty, I remember back in 2014, 15, when I met Mark Okasaki, and we just felt like, you know, some of our humble beginnings really had similar beginnings. And that just knowing that we're sharing space now and also listening to the presentation from Health Point, I think it's just a beautiful site in which we're going to be able to do some wonderful things. Actually, in 1920, we began with our first program. It was called the Filipino Community Center. And 100 years later, here we are. In 2013, St. Vincent de Paul noticed because of their work on the ground serving communities with Renton Utilities and building those relationships, that the disproportionality in South King County was, was huge. And so in 2012, a new strategic plan was built with this some listening in the South King County area with the Latino community. And in 2013, Central Rendu, named after one of the founders of St. Vincent de Paul Society, the, this program started to serve the Hispanic immigrant communities for educational services because we believe that education is a way out of poverty. It's about leadership development, family supports, and now early learning opportunities for children and some prevention programs for, for young, young men and women in, in school. And Central Rendu has been serving over 1,000 Latino families and individuals since we opened our, our doors seven years ago. Our main feature, as it says here, is it's our Educational Resource Center for the community, for the Latino community in South King County, and we provide different services. I'm just going to go to the next slide. So this is kind of a cornerstone. Central Rendu offers free adult basic education classes in Spanish. We do partner with the Mexican consulate and have a full program that can allow, that, that supports adults who've never had the opportunity to to read, to learn to read and write in their own native language. And I think council member Ruth Perez was probably foundational in getting this program in our, in our state many, many years ago. But it's a really, really valuable and important program because sometimes we say, well, why don't immigrant people know English? Or why don't they learn faster, or shouldn't they, and all these things? But, you know, a lot of people never had the opportunity to formally complete their own education in their own native language. So it's very, very important for us to be able to provide this kind of programming. And then from there, we build partnership with Renton Technical College and others and to help people continue their path in education to complete their GED. Obviously, we do computer literacy, financial literacy, and other workshops in Spanish to build capacity in the adults and the parents. So positive parenting classes and also dealing with bullying in school so parents can have the empowerment that they need to support their children. Next slide. It's our newest program, it's called De Colores, and it's our early learning education program. Prior to COVID, we were doing home visits because this is a home-based program where we go into people's homes and that we bring early learning and social emotional strategies for the parents to build our capacity to just use all of who they are and believe in themselves as the first educators of their children. Now because of COVID, we are still visiting, but, you know, kind of from a distance. We, we sometimes call them via Zoom and talk to them about what they need to be doing, or we use WhatsApp or whatever other technology they have access to. And if not, we will help build capacity so reach the technology gap there. But we will talk to the parents, check with them, and then swing by their house and drop off whatever they need, basic need stuff, and also materials for them to practice with their kids for their early learning education. Next. Re-Rev Youth Prevention Program. This is our program that works with kids who either have behavioral, well, they will have some type of behavioral issues going on in, in the school and they're not performing academically, they might have some risky behaviors, and also with mom and dad at home. So this is a, a family-based program. In many ways, we do target, we work with the kids one-on-one, but we also recognize that they live in a family and in a community. So we address different challenges, we work with one forcemen. And these kids are wonderful. We've gotten them from, you know, they, they're failing their grades and then in six months, they're, they're shining. So lots of opportunity with our young people. Next. We, we have a back-to-work program, as we call it. And basically, we are providing employment readiness trainings and job connections. And this is for our adults as well. Next. Everything that we do, we do provide case management services in Spanish that are culturally responsive to the community. This is really important for us because we recognize that, you know, those who we are, we feel committed to serving, who are experiencing poverty, or, you know, they might be in a different situation, a crisis situation, that we need to wrap around them, their family, and provide a step-by-step process to support them to get stability and then self-sufficiency. Next. We have a parent ambassador and leadership development program that supports authentic family and community engagement in schools. And it is a series of, of workshops regarding school advocacy, community resources, technology support, and on and on. And we, yeah, next. This is, you know, we do events throughout the year. Right before COVID, we had a wonderful event at the Sunset Neighborhood before it opened, obviously, and it was just wonderful. We had a lot of community come in, so I think the community has been waiting and waiting and waiting for a year to, to see this wonderful space open. And so just last Saturday, we did a drive-through event. We call it Thanksgiving Day, and we handed out a lot of things, and we had a great turnout. So the community knows we're there and, and they're very, very excited to come and visit. You know, COVID has been a little bit of a challenge, but we are still making appointments and allowing people to come one-on-one and see Laura, who's at the front, front office. We have one office where Laura is there, she answers the main line, and she is from the Sunset Neighborhood Community, and she's been with Central Rendu for about five and a half years. I did just want to take a moment to thank the city of Renton for the kids' dollars that we did receive, and we were able to help a lot of people. The deadline was last Friday, so we don't have the funds anymore, but we helped a lot of people, and that was wonderful. And I just have on this screen our helpline. Our helpline for St. Vincent de Paul is there is a 206 number, and that's where everybody calls if they need rental assistance. The 253 is the number for Central Rendu, and the line is answering Spanish. And we can provide all kinds of support and information through that line. I notice a typo, this, if you need to email, the typo is centralrendu@svdp.org, not com. But yeah, St. Vincent de Paul Seattle.org. Are there any questions?
Maria, well, Maria, let's take questions at the end, please. Thank you very much to you and your team, and it's, it's wonderful to have your Latino services embedded in our community. Thank you. Next. In addition to coordinating the center's capital campaign, Neighborhood House has also been providing services in the Sunset area, as James mentioned earlier, to support RHA's senior residents in the community. James will now share with you more information about their services at the center. Is James still with us?
It doesn't look like he is, Mark.
Okay, let's go ahead and take next. Oh no, I can address the slides briefly, sorry. So as James mentioned earlier, they're more than 100 years old and they provide services throughout our region, have done a lot of work with RHA, King County Housing Authority, and the Seattle Housing Authority. They're serving over 15,000 residents a year in our county. Next. One of their critical, one of the services that they provide as an agency is aging and disability services to support elder residents. And four of RHA's five elderly housing projects are in the Sunset Neighborhood. And years ago, Neighborhood House started providing services to best support And years ago, Neighbored House started providing services to best support the elders in the community. Next. One of the primary ways they do that is by providing information and referral resources. And also they do healthcare coordination to provide, to help make connections between the residents and their healthcare needs. Next. These are the, currently, they're doing services by intake and appointments, mainly remotely. And there's the contact language, excuse me, the contact numbers for services. And as we get more relief from COVID, they'll be providing more onsite services. And that just reiterates how they're providing services and coordination with some of our other service providers, both Health Point and Centro Rendu. Next. Okay, and there, James has noted there, there are holidays. And they do have the COVID community help list available that's listed there for anyone who's looking for greater resources in the region to help respond to basic needs and other services during COVID. Next. Okay, our, our final presenter tonight is Frankie Kennedy. She's the Valley Cities Renton Clinic Manager. Valley Cities is providing behavioral health services at the center as an integral part of the services to the community. Frankie.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks for having me. It's nice to be part of this great group of organizations coming together to offer more. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to be part of this project is prior to, prior to COVID-19, we are always looking for ways to get out there and offer more to the community rather than, rather than being confined and expecting the community to come to us. And so that's one of the reasons why we were interested in joining this project. Next slide. Thank you. So Valley Cities has been around since about 1965. We started out with just a handful of employees and we're about 560-plus employees at this point. We are currently at 11 locations. We just opened a new location in Bitter Lake. We Apologies, folks. Everything should be back now. Can we get the next slide, Hannah? Thank you. So the point of being involved in this project is to bring our services to more people in more areas in the Renton area. Renton's a lot larger than I thought it was. We're in a tiny little space right now downtown and our people come from everywhere. Even during the pandemic, our lobby is seeing people every day. And we wanted to be able to bring more services in more places. Some of the, some of the services that we plan to offer at the Sunset Neighborhood Center is we, we would like to be able to do intakes and we would like to be able to coordinate with others in the building. So when they have someone who they think needs an intake and they can't be seen at that moment, it would be nice if they could just pick up the phone and say, hey, can you see this client? We think he needs your services. So I know that we coordinate a lot already with Health Point and many, many other services. I spent most of my day today trying to find housing for some, some people who are in dire straits. And so we're always looking for other ways to collaborate. We'd also like to be able to offer some individual counseling, some crisis support, therapy, as well as therapy groups and support groups. Right now, we're focusing on mostly online, virtual therapy, but it's working. It's sometimes hard with this population. Luckily, we've been able to get a lot of grants and a lot of donations of smartphones. So that we're able to keep clients engaged even when they can't make it in. We also want to be part of the referral service. One of my goals for the Renton Clinic, which is where I'm clinic manager, is to not give resources, but to, to make the resources happen. So giving someone the name and number of someone to contact for something they need is such a defeating feeling. I want to go further than that. I want to be able to walk a person over, reach a person on the phone, talk to a person at a front desk and be able to connect that person with the service that they need. So that being part of the Sunset Neighborhood Center really gives me the feeling that we're going to be able to do more of that. And I'm really excited for that. Next. So ultimately, we would like to be in the center Monday through Friday during opening hours. Currently, we've had a lot of staff changes, several program changes. We've had some programs lose funding. Our numbers honestly are not down. We currently at the Renton Clinic serve around 700 clients and quite a large number of them are engaged. And actually, we have more clients showing up for services now than we did prior to COVID shutdowns. So people are definitely in need of the services and we'd like to be able to give them more. However, due to staffing issues, it's going to be difficult for us to immediately staff the clinic the way we would like to. So we're looking at probably being there two to four days a week for a while until we can get some new people hired and make sure that we have the staff that can, that can meet the needs of that space. So someone who can do intakes and can do therapy and, and is willing to run groups. That's definitely one of our goals. We're hoping that by the spring, we should be able to staff it often and hopefully get some groups going through the summer, which would be a great possibility, I think. But I guess we'll just see with how things are moving. But we're excited about being there and we're available to anyone there. Is there one more slide? I can't remember. There is. So this is my contact information and I hope that everyone keeps this and lets me know if there's any way that I can support you. I know that we are always sending clients to Health Point and we are always getting help from Health Point in St. Vincent de Paul. So many organizations that we rely on every day to help us advocate for our clients and we appreciate that and we're excited to be here.
Thank you, Frankie. And thanks for your team's efforts to provide mental health services, especially during this very trying times for many people. So the, the city has invested both capital and operating funds for the center, including the $400,000 capital grant that James referenced earlier. And the council recently approved $7,500 a year for the next two years for RHA and Neighbored House to provide services as well. So we thank the mayor and the council for your financial support for the center. Next. We've been extremely fortunate to have had more than 13 partners who each played an integral role in making the Sunset Neighborhood Center possible. Thanks to each of these partners for their collaboration, creativity, dedication, and support to establish the Sunset Neighborhood Center. This project is another excellent example of what we can do when we work together with other partners to create a shared vision and address community needs. Next. Although many partners made the center possible, I especially want to offer thanks to Mark Roper, RHA's Executive Director, the RHA Board of Commissioners and the RHA staff and their architectural and development team for their collaborative and collective efforts to purchase, design, renovate, and operate the center to serve the Sunset Area, Renton Highlands, community, and beyond. I also want to thank Marco Okasaki, the former Executive Director at Neighbored House, plus James Lovell and multiple staff and AmeriCorps Vista members at Neighbored House who collectively led our capital campaign and successfully raised nearly $3 million in public and private funds. Thank you also to Health Point, St. Vincent de Paul, Centro Rendu, Neighbored House, and Valley Cities for your commitment to provide place-based services at the center to respond to the community's needs. You are the heart of the Sunset Neighborhood. We greatly appreciate all of your collective efforts and thank you for your successful community collaboration. Next. We, we now welcome your questions for a few minutes before we move to our next presentation from Consejo.
Councilmembers, thank you, thank you, Mark. Councilmembers, do you have any questions right now at this point about the Sunset area?
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Corman.
I'd, I'd just like to say it's a really impressive presentation for a really impressive project. And I, I can't imagine a better, a better way to repurpose the Highlands Library. What a, what a beautiful suite of services that are being provided there. Just the, the perfect location for them. And then I had, so thank you all that participated in the presentation. One quick question about Health Point. I was wondering, do, are, are people that are uninsured welcome to, to walk in and arrange for an appointment? Is, can somebody give me a little bit of insight into how that works?
Yeah, and I'm sorry about that. I should have included more information. But yes, our motto is that we accept all patients regardless of their ability to pay. So if anyone walks in without insurance, we will either help them find it. We'll help them get on a sliding scale. The only insurance we don't take is United, but generally, we work that out where we are able to give information about various insurance types to patients and they switch so that they can see us.
Well, that's an amazing service that's very much needed. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman. Just for clarified, even if I don't have insurance and I cannot apply for insurance, would you provide services to the community?
Yes, we will not turn anyone away. Even if for some reason, you know, you don't have the money that day to pay for the service or can't sign you up for insurance, we have so many different grants and whatnot that we can work with, with patients on to make sure that they can get the service that they want.
Thank you. Any more questions at this point or comments? I see none. I want to thank all of you for your efforts and for being incredible partners to the city of Renton. And Mark, I know that we have another presentation, so we will continue with that. And, and then we will open the floor for more questions. Thank you.
Okay, if any of our Sunset Neighborhood Center preventers have other commitments, feel free to leave, but otherwise, we'll proceed with the Consejo presentation and then we'll take questions at the end as, as we have time. As some of you may know, Consejo Counseling or Rural Services has been providing services to the low-income community in the region since 1978. Their main office is in Seattle, but they currently provide services in King, Pierce, Thurston, and Manson Counties. And they have a significant presence in Renton, which includes a new administrative office. Tonight, we are very fortunate to have Mario Paredes, the Consejo Executive Director, and Terry Vispo, the Consejo Counseling Deputy of Clinical Services, here with us to share more information about their organization, services, and their Renton facility and operations. Mario, you're on. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank the Renton City Council and Mayor's Office for allowing us the opportunity to present Consejo services to you. And the opening of the Consejo facility has been a, a project that has been occurring for the last three years. We're coming up to the last phase of the project and that is why we wanted to do a presentation to you. Next slide, Brits. We're Consejo Counseling is an organization that provides behavioral health services. We primarily focus on mental health, substance abuse. We own housing programs, a very large domestic violence and sexual assault program. And we provide services to individuals and families in the community. Consejo differentiate our services because we use an independent treatment model, which basically uses a centralized care model, which includes home-based, school-based, community-based services. And we engage clients at all level, at all levels. The fact that a client is Medicaid or non-Midake is irrelevant for Consejo services. Consejo was meant to serve the Latino community and a large percentage of our clients do not have insurance. Our goal is to empower clients to function from the highest level possible and to fund and to get re-engaged in the community, whether it's employment, education, or other aspect of their life. Next slide, please. As Mark mentioned, Consejo has been providing services since 1978. And our core services include behavioral health services. We're licensed, we have been licensed by the Health Care Authority and the former DBHR for the last, since 1978 to do behavioral health services and substance abuse services. We primarily provide outpatient Level 1 and outpatient Level 2 services as well as DUI assessments and other services related to substance abuse. In the domestic violence field, we have been the lead organization providing services, domestic violence services to women and children with a Latino, Spanish-speaking and Latino background. In sexual assault, we also provide, have a very good footprint in the services that we provide, trauma-informed care to sexual assault survivors. We also have a Children's Youth and Family Program Division, Complementary Medicine Division, and a Transitional Housing Program. All of those services are available to any of Consejo's clients, depending on the region that we are. Like Mark mentioned, we are in four regions. We have a facility in King County, two facilities in Prince County, and two facilities in the Thurston and Mason Region. Next slide, please. One of our, the main components for services of Consejo is the Domestic Violence Program. And through the, through the Domestic Violence Program, we have worked to provide advocacy-based services, informational research, support groups, individual therapy, transitional housing services for domestic violence. Many of the immigrant women and children that come to our program, our Domestic Violence Program, do not speak the language. So we provide them with domestic violence services in a culturally and linguistically competent manner. Our main focus is to provide them with the different options that they have. This includes legal advocacy, community advocacy, social services, crisis intervention, safety planning. And when appropriate, we also pay for hotel nights and provide emergency food or even assist with relocation from one estate to another to domestic violence survivors. Sometimes we get women that is coming from another state or sometimes we may be referring to a family to another estate. And we work with a network of domestic violence programs, not just within King County or the United States, but also with programs in Latin America that have domestic violence programs. There's some kind of a program with clients who ask for, we refer client back to them when they're moving to their homeland. Next, next one, please. Another key component of our services is our Sexual Assault Program. Sexual Assault Services is a program that we have been doing since the initiations of Consejo. These services include outreach education, a lot of education to the community. We use a lot of social media platforms to provide sexual assault education to our clients in a language that they can understand. We, as part of our service portfolio, we assist them We, as part of our service portfolio, we assist them to either just get the information, enroll in services, access all the services. We work very closely with law enforcement, like in the city of Renton. We have worked very closely with some of your offices. We have invited some of your offices to our sexual assault groups to meet with some of our survivors, to educate them, you know, how to talk to law enforcement. We also work with the prosecutor's office very closely, and we also work with the public defendant offices, because some of our, uh, clients are dealing with the issue of victim, uh, victim defendants as well. So we work with, uh, all sides of criminal justice, uh, law enforcement, as well as social services, and, uh, most importantly, we also work very closely with clients who are dealing with immigration and need, assisting with law on how to use, how to apply for being victim of crimes and to obtain a residency status in the United States as a result of the crime that they experienced. In addition to that, Consejo uses a lot of trauma-informed care that we provide to our services, especially survivors of sexual assault. And keep in mind that many of the sexual assault survivors that we work with are individuals who have experienced different sexual traumatic events and different aspects of their lives. Some of them incest when they were children, some of them raped when they, uh, were traveling to the United States and were crossing the border and were sexually abused by other individuals, some of them sexually, sexual abuse within their family, and some of them also domestic violence and sexual violence within a relationship. So we deal with all of those as we provide services to, to our clients. Next one, please. Terry's gonna take the next slide.
Yes, thank you, Mario. Hello. Our Children, Youth, and Family Program at Consejo works directly with children and families, and one of the things that we do that's important is that we always engage, try to engage the youth and families who also have family participation in treatment. So our services include substance use disorder treatment and also mental health, um, services. We work, um, closely with schools to provide services at schools and also in the community of where the child or youth lives. And also, we also provide home-based counseling. Now, because we're in the world of, uh, currently with the pandemic, we have, um, began working with telehealth services, which has been a really positive experience. Some of the things that we've done is that we've delivered backpacks and therapeutic supplies to children and youth that we work with. So in a, in an effort to engage the youth and the child in therapy. We also provide wraparound family services where we work with other partners, um, uh, in the family. We've, we have a violence prevention case management program, and we also have an annual youth leadership conference. Our children and youth who are in need of psychiatric services will be seen by our psychiatrist for a psychiatric evaluation, and based on that, if the, if the child or youth needs medication, we also provide medication management, and we work with the family on that. Next slide, please. Our outpatient mental health program also, um, it works with, individually with adults, and we provide mental health screenings and same-day intake assessments. The intake assessment, um, includes a bio-cycle-social assessment and gathers information and data that will help the clinician come up with a mental health diagnosis. And we then provide individual therapy, um, family therapy, case management services where we link the family to available resources in the community based on their needs. We provide care coordination, and what we do with that is to ensure that the person is connected, say, for example, with a medical provider, with a dental provider, with a nutritionist, with whatever it is that the person needs. So we look at the person as a whole. At Consejo, we provide the behavioral health component, but then the primary care component or other parts that the person may need. We, we work closely with, uh, other providers that can offer that, those services. We also provide peer services, and that is an individual who is, has had a personal mental health experience, either themselves or a family member, and so they've been in their own mental health journey. And we pair the, the, our client with the peer, when the peer can assist them and showing what, what things they did that worked for them, and that's been a very positive experience, uh, for many of our clients. Less restrictive alternatives is something that we are credentialed to provide, and what that is, is when a person is in the hospital, they get discharged from the hospital to a less restrictive place, which is an outpatient clinic. And we work closely with mental health courts to ensure that that individual comes in and is compliant with the court order, comes in for therapy, sees our psychiatrist, and, and continues with the order so, to avoid the hospitalization. Psychiatric evaluations is something, as I mentioned before, with the youth program that we provide. Currently, we're providing the services in person and also through telehealth. Uh, next slide, please. Consejo also has a substance use disorder program, um, again, for youth and also for adults. We provide SUD screenings and, and also offer an assessment, same-day assessments. Our goal is to ensure that we are able to, once the person comes in for care, that we are able to provide the services immediately. We provide case management and care coordination, individual and group family therapy to our substance abuse program, uh, clients. We do alcohol and drug screenings, trauma-informed care, as well as system navigation assistance, pro-social recreational outlets, recovery coach services. We provide DUI assessments, so we're very closely with the courts, court-mandated treatment, therapeutic court services, and as well as drug and alcohol information school. Next slide, please. Now, at Consejo, um, we see the person as a whole. We are behavioral health experts, but then also, we work very closely with primary care and naturopathic medicine, and so we, we've, we have various partnerships, and one of them is with Bastea University. We've had a partnership with them for over, for over 12 years. They are at our location, they come in, uh, once a week, and they provide naturopathic medicine for free to any of our patients. In doing that, they're able to look at the person's nutrition, they provide acupuncture, East Asian medicine. I never know how to pronounce this, but I believe it's Ayurvedic medicine, um, and also counseling. And we work very closely with the naturopathic doctors as they provide treatment to our patients. Next slide. Okay. In addition to that, um, we also provide, we also have partners for primary care, and that's part of our integrated care that we do for whole person and, uh, for whole-person care and coordination of care. So, um, we have partnership with Swedish Sheri Hill. It's a residency program where they come into our locations in Seattle and are able to see our patients, uh, any age, any age group, and provide services for free to our, our clients. We also have partners with Community Healthcare, Peninsula Community Healthcare as well, and we have several memorandums of agreements, uh, with several clinics, including, uh, C Mar and HealthPoint. Thank you. I think Mario, you're gonna be presenting.
So one of the, um, key services that Consejo has, is Consejo owns, uh, three transitional housing programs. One transitional housing program, program, um, that you see on the, on your left, uh, right, left corner on, um, is Las Prisas Housing, which basically is a housing facility that provide housing for homeless mental ill individuals. And then we own two domestic violence transitional housing programs. One is Coni Casa, and the other one is P Esperanza. All of our housing programs are fully equipped with furniture. P Esperanza is a Section A facility, um, fully subsidized by Section A, and the resident is only responsible for the 30% portion of the rent. However, most, most residents that are living at P Esperanza are very low income, they are able to qualify for other, uh, program programs as well. And, uh, Las Prisas is subsidized by, um, levy funds, uh, through the city of Seattle. And then we have another housing facility, it's Coni Casa, which is basically located, um, within, um, it's a confidential location that is located, uh, close to, to Renton, and we are basically providing services, uh, to domestic violence survivors there. On any given day, we can house up to, uh, up to 150 clients within the three housing facilities, including childrens, adults, and older adults. In those programs, we provide them with all the necessary, uh, housing support services. In addition, not providing with the roof over their head, we also provide them with, um, therapeutic services as they need, as, as appropriate and they want to access them, and those therapeutic services could be in the areas of domestic violence, sexual assault, drug and alcohol treatment, uh, mental health therapy, and so forth. Next, next slide, please. So Consejo Counseling has been working very diligent to bring the services to the city of Renton. The, um, we purchased a facility in the city of Renton, uh, three years ago, and we have been working, uh, with, uh, the city of Renton planners and those, uh, and our architects, and also with the state, and the facility is currently being renovated. The facility will be located, uh, 723 Southwest 10th Street, which is in Southwest Grady Way, um, just next to the COVID test site that you have in the Renton area right now. We will have, uh, 84 offices and seven conference rooms in that particular facility, so it will be our largest, uh, facility that we will have in the King County area. We're very pleased, uh, that things are moving along. We're about, um, 50% construction done. We should be able to open the facility the first week of April at the latest. The facility is scheduled to, to be completed, uh, by, um, the end of February, and then furnished during the month of, um, March, and, and used during the month of April. We're very excited to, to come here, and we, many of the organizations that you listed in your previous presentation, we already partnered with L, with them, such as Centro Rendu, I mean, with your presentations for, for the classes, and we work with many organizations that, uh, within the city of Renton, we partner with the, uh, Renton School District. We have a formal memorandum of agreement with the Renton School District to receive childrens, and the city of Renton has, um, uh, in 2008, 19, and 20, has funded our domestic violence services as well. So thank you for your time. We're available for any questions if you have.
Mark?
Um, I, I turn it over to the council field questions for either the Sunset Neighborhood Center or Consejo.
Thank you, Mario. Thank you, Terry. Council members, do you have any questions at this point? I see none. Mario, I really want to thank you for your presentation and welcoming you to Renton. It's very exciting that you guys are gonna be here and providing all the services that I know that you have provided already for our residents for a long time, but now that you are gonna be here in Renton, uh, I'm looking forward for our future partnership. At the same time, Mark, I really want to thank you for all the work that you are, have done. I do remember in 2015, being in my first meeting with you and Senator, um, the staff, the staff from Senator Cantwell, uh, as well in the Renton Housing Authority, and, and I remember your passion on describing the need of the Sunset area and, uh, and how strong you were advocating on behalf of our neighbors. I really want to appreciate how committed you have been over the years to bring services that are much needed in the, in that area and in the whole city of Renton.
Well, thank you, but it's been my distinct honor to work with some great partners, and working together is what made it happen. So I really appreciate the chance to have those partners be able to share with you tonight. Collectively, they made it happen, so thank you.
Thank you. So any more questions or comments? I see none. So thank you very much, everybody that have participated. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.